Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, June 14th, meeting of the Reno County Commission. We'll go ahead and do the Pledge of Allegiance and then have a prayer by Chaplain Haley from the Reno County Sheriff's Office.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For lo he that formeth the mountains and created the wind, declareeth unto man what is his thought, and makeeth the morning darkness, and treadeth upon the high places of the earth, the Lord, the Lord, the God of hosts, is his name. Shall we pray? Our gracious Lord, heavenly Father, we come for you this morning with thanksgiving for the blessed divine word of God. Lord, this morning, as these men meet, we pray for them, that you would give them, Lord, your divine wisdom and understanding. Lord, bless those that are here, and all the supportive staff, and all the administration. We thank you, Lord, for the community in the city in which we live. My wife and I thank you for 21 years of fruitful service here in Hutchinson, and, Lord, the opportunity, Lord, this morning, to be here and to lift up these in prayer. Lord, you are the creative God who created us, individuals with our own thoughts and our own will and desires, and may, Lord, each of us be submitted, Lord, to thee this morning. You are the God of our salvation through Christ our Lord, and the sacrifice on Calvary for the sins of all the world. And then, Lord, you are the God that grants divine wisdom to those that seek you and ask you. I ask you, Lord, this morning, for your special hand upon this meeting, and that, Lord, as these men conduct business, and all the supportive staff, and those here, that, Lord, each one would have accomplished that which, Lord, you would please to do. Lord, most of all, we do lift up our city and our community, and we ask, Lord, that you continue to bless Hutchinson and the surrounding communities, Lord, and, Father, be with each one today. Lord, as the chaplain for the Sheriff and Police Department, we lift up, Lord, our community in, Lord, the day-to-day routine of each one. And, dear God, just watch over us. We thank you, dear Lord Jesus, for your grace and presence, for it's in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
Amen. Chaplain, you can be seated. I asked the chaplain to introduce himself after the prayer today. He's a little bit new to his post.
Yes, I'm now the Director of the Reno County Police and Sheriff Chaplaincy, Master Willard Stafford and Mel Parrott. Due to age and health, resigned, and so about a year ago, I began to transition with them and go into some training. And as of June 1st, I took over as the Director. I'm also a pastor at Riverside Baptist Church, so pray for me. It's great to be here today, and good to see you all here. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, Chaplain. Okay. Well, again, welcome, everybody, here. It looks like most everybody kind of know in the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment for an item not on the agenda? I know Denise, you had an item. Feel free to come up.
I just wanted to give the Commission a quick update on the market study. We are well underway on our focus groups, and I also wanted to let the community know that we are still accepting people to be involved in those focus groups, particularly rural Reno County residents, parents seeking care in particular, and providers in particular. So if anybody wants to participate in one of those groups, I can be reached at the United Way of Reno County, and I would be happy to plug them into a group. So that is all I had, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Denise?
I mentioned Denise Gilone from United Way.
Yes, Denise Gilone from United Way. I just assume everybody knows who I am at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, public comment, not on the agenda? And it looks like we have some candidates for Reno County Commission here. Appreciate you guys being here today, too. Thank you. Does the Commission have any revisions or additions to the agenda?
I have none.
Hearing none. I will move on to the consent agenda. Randy, do you have any comments or feedback on the consent agenda? How's the Commission wish to proceed on the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Commissioner Hurst moves. Second by Commissioner Sellers. Discussion. Do those dates in 6D and 6E work for everybody at this point? Now they're ways off. Once they're set, they're kind of set, right? Let me just double check here.
Well, we can appoint somebody to take your place here.
That happened once already. Okay, hearing, no discussion on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to business items, 7A, we have a summary of the ARPA requests. County Administrator, I have a report you'd like to present.
So in the packet is the summary of the ARPA request, and I kind of put it on the cover We talked about gathering the applications. The deadline was in May, bringing it back to the County Commission for discussion and possible further steps, whether you guys want to have a committee that goes through, scores the items, has a discussion, and brings recommendations back to the County Commission, or individually, which staff has already, has a spreadsheet scoring matrix pretty much put together, couple calculations, formulas that we're double checking right now. If you want us to send that to you, then individually, you can score the various applications, and at another future meeting, come back and decide what you want to do with these. So in the scoring, what we have right now is based on Commission's original buckets of childcare, or buckets, which were childcare, housing, economic development, general impression of the applications, any positive return for Reno County, whether it meets a priority listed by the ARPA task force, if it serves disadvantaged and/or COVID-impacted populations, long-term impact and sustainability of the applications, whether it's a necessity for Reno County to fund, and then public-private partnership. Those were some that were developed by staff and with some outside feedback. Wanted to see if the Commission wants to go down that path with the scoring and other measures, and then I'll kind of show the summary of the applications. But I kind of wanted to see direction from the Commission.
I'll kick off this conversation. I don't think the scoring or the outside committee process is necessary. When we started out this process, seems like eons ago, the three of us had some general consent that we were going to have three major buckets, and that was of childcare and of housing and of economic development. And so I think that we should consider those that we did think of originally strongly. If I recall, we kind of put Commissioner Hurst in charge of the childcare bucket, and we've certainly had a lot of input from the childcare people. Commissioner Friesen was working on economic development, and we've had a lot of input from that segment. And I worked on the housing aspect, and I think we have three good substantial recommendations from that area, and we have a total of $12.42,000 to allocate, and I think we're at the point that we ought to start making firm decisions on these things and get it allocated, get it over with. We've, I sent my thoughts to the County Administrator on Friday of where we should be at some point in the future. I'm very willing to discuss those and debate those with the other two Commissioners, but I don't see that we need to do a lot of process on this at this point in time, as much time and effort that the three of us have put into it at this point.
Commissioner Hurst?
I've been involved in scoring grants before, and federal-type grants, and I think that's a completely different situation in some aspects that we have here, because we just scored them, and they went further on up the ladder. And we had a matrix set up, and I think there's some differences there, because we only had basically a couple of major areas in those. And I think there's some items on here that myself, I think we needed really, the three of us need to discuss, because I think there's some items on here that probably should be not qualify as high as others, because some of them have to do with user fees and planning ahead, and some of them, I think we can just discuss those, and we may not agree on all everything, but that's the way it works. We can come up with some type of agreement with regards to that. And so I guess, as much as I enjoy and think a lot of the scoring of the matrix system, I've talked to Randy about that before, and I'm having a little difficulty coming up, maybe I'm not smart enough to figure this out, but to do a matrix system for this particular ARPA funds. We've got the three main areas. I think all those three main areas all fit together with regards to what we would like to see growth in Reno County, and some of them are kind of offshoots from the major three areas that we looked at. So I'm all right with having a work-study session or time to do that.
Sounds like there's consensus to have a further conversation amongst the Commission, but not establish a committee. It seems like we could, I think maybe we could collect, it sounds like you have some input, Randy, maybe we could get all three to provide some written input, and then you could provide that back to us, and that would be a basis for conversation.
I could bring it back to you guys in a public meeting, but I can't really send it to you off meetings. So I guess that's where I would ask, since you guys have all the information, is there a direction for me? What do you guys need from me to be able to start making those decisions?
Well, it sounds like I would like to see the other two Commissioners' feedback, and if that needs to be in a public meeting, that's fine. I think we should collect thoughts ahead of time and then set up a study session, as Commissioner Hurst mentioned. Does that sound good? Does that, are you?
Yeah, because we've kind of been going, having these for a while. We've had these discussions, so we'd want a special meeting like within the next week or two, this month, so that, or do you need more time?
I'm ready to discuss it with the other two Commissioners and make some decisions so that people can start helping people in the community.
I think we can try to fit it in to one of our meetings or set up a special meeting, either way. I'd almost say we could talk about it today, but there's some other stuff on the agenda, and I have a few more questions that I've written down that I'd like some answers on, but I think I'd be ready in a week or two. So how's the next meeting look?
There's not much on it at this time.
How about we look at putting that on the agenda for next regular meeting?
Are there any items that you think we could even discuss yet today? After, we can table this till at the end of the business items? Is that what you would like to do?
I think wouldn't hurt to discuss a little further.
Commissioner, just kind of looking at the other agenda items, the rest of the agenda items are Patrick and myself giving presentations, so there's no one else here for the rest of the agenda items. This is really the staff agenda for the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Well, let me start off. I think where we're at, correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, we've allocated, have we allocated the amount for childcare?
You've talked about different numbers for childcare. I think originally it may have been $5 million, then it went to four and a half. I think at the last meeting, you said four and then four and a half, so honestly, that one isn't real clear of the exact number for childcare. And then the other one that you've already allocated is the fire trucks for City of Hutchinson Fire, that $440,000. You did state at the meeting with the City of Hutchinson on that one, though, you weren't certain that it was all coming from ARPA funds. It's either capital reserve or Reno County and/or ARPA funds. So that's one to consider of what you want to do with that, whether to use capital reserve or the ARPA money.
Okay. On the brush trucks you're talking about?
Brush trucks, yes.
So it sounds like we have tentative placeholders for childcare, and we did same thing with housing.
Yes.
What's the range of that?
Four and a half was for the housing. That was originally Interfaith and SCED. The new request from Jim Strong came in. That's part of housing, but that one hasn't been discussed for the additional request from Mr. Strong. But for Interfaith and SCED, it was mentioned at four and a half million.
And what's the plan for oversight and the overhead associated with the grant management?
Patrick's worked on some agreements, inter-local agreements, contracts, that we'd be ready for any agency that we'd be working with, probably for United Way and Interfaith, SCED. We've worked directly with them for, they deal with grants, they deal with federal money, so we would let them do a lot of the oversight and just follow the guidelines that we put in place.
One thing, just in some discussions I've had with some stakeholders, it sounds like the City of Hutch is doing their own process a little bit differently, but they, I think they sent out an RFP for kind of a grant And have you had any conversations with the city on what they're doing?
I talked with Gary a couple weeks ago about their RFP, knowing that they were sending that out, but other than that, only what I've read in the paper, seen at their meetings, that they're going to be splitting it, maybe some for the city and then put the other out for grants, and then they'd have a scoring matrix and application process.
I guess my point is, it seems like there's going to be some overlap, whether it's through administrative work, allocation of funds for childcare, allocations for funds with housing. Wouldn't it make sense for us to collaborate with them and just, like, if we both have a priority of childcare and it's the same agency, like, why don't we just put all the money in one bucket and have one oversight?
Because we would still have the additional work, maybe one person or one company overseeing that money, but we just have two completely separate audits, since our monies sent to us, we're accountable for our part of the money. And then splitting it out on grants, if it was combined, might be a little difficult, but something to look at.
When you say audit, is that just preparing for a potential audit, or there will be an audit?
Well, I think there will be the, what do you call it, over a million dollars, what do they call that? Sorry, I'm blanking on the, what's that?
The A133?
Yeah.
We will have an audit automatically, just the amount of federal dollars that we have, we'll have an audit each year that we have that money or spend that money.
I mean, you know, basically what I've drafted is just to make sure that everyone understands that they get these funds, that they're going to provide receipts and keep records to get back to the county. I was talking to a colleague the other day, and they shared that they're hearing, people are hearing that the Spark Grant from 2020 is just now being audited, and some entities are having a little bit more trouble with that audit than they anticipated. So that's kind of the worst case, to me, seeing as legal, the worst-case scenario is several years from now, having some audit problems and not finding records and not having the right, not having it housed with us. But I think, Randy and I talked to several different consultants and options, and we just never found an obviously good solution, whether to outsource it. It's not that, there's pros and cons to all of it, and we never have been able to find something that we thought was so great that we just had to strongly urge you guys to do it. There's lots of different ways you can proceed on that.
Am I correct in understanding that we either have the entity that's getting the funds, like United Way and Interfaith Housing and SCED, that they have a figure already set in of those, the money they're getting for their own management of the funds, correct? So it's either we pay them or we hire someone to do that.
Interfaith did include it in their application. I think they do have it in there. I'm not sure if the other agencies have it.
I think that's healthy.
I mean, the compliance with all this is a burden that whoever's spending the money is going to have to deal with, so that's part of their budget for a lot of them.
See, I think we should include a small amount of money in our final allocations for either an internal audit by the county or by the county hiring somebody to do that audit for us. I think that there's going to be some responsibility on the county end to say we concur with Interfaith or we can concur with United Way. And so I think that since we've got a large number of years here to expend the money, at this point in time, we ought to allocate some money for that expense. Then as this progresses, if we see that isn't necessary, it can be moved to program. But I think a small amount of money, as Randy indicated in previous sessions with us, is needed by either internal staff by the county or by hiring external staff to provide this on behalf of the county, because we don't want to get in this situation that, like you're referring to, that is back in 2020, and I remember the 2020. I think we did a good enough job that I don't think we're going to have trouble with it, but I think we should worry about that for the future.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not anticipating, I'm not trying to blow this out of proportion and say this is a, but it is something we'll have to deal with. Basically, there'll be a spreadsheet that has to add up to the $12.4 million and shows exactly how that got spent out, so.
If one of the recipients had made a mistake, we're the county's on the hook for it. I mean, we are going to have to put that money back, right? So.
We are ultimately responsible for the money, yeah, and so that's why we're going to require all the recipients to make periodic updates with us so that we can monitor and make sure it's going well and being expended the right way. And if they were to expend it improperly, we would hopefully quickly be able to catch it and say, hey, we need you guys to correct this or pay us back. That's kind of the process. We're not anticipating any of those things, but that's just why you, that's why you monitor those grants, so that makes sure you don't, you get ahead of something.
And that's why I think we need some monies there to follow this process along, whether it's a similar situation like we hired Gary Mager and John Deirdoff IV in 2020 or some outside group. It has to be followed on an ongoing basis. You just can't wait till the end.
It costs quite a bit of money to handle these funds and to check them and make sure they're in audit.
And unfortunately, when you deal with federal government, you've got to spend some money to make sure it's done right. Too bad that that's necessary, but it's necessary. You know, I know where I'm at on this. I just don't know where the other two Commissioners are, and I wish there was a process that we could go through before our next public meeting to kind of get a feel of where the other two Commissioners are, so that, you know, it's hard to hash out 20 different requests. There's so many permutations of that the three of us got to agree to, but I, if the county manager could tell you where I'm at on these things, and we can be closer when we meet next time in public, so that we know where people are.
Patrick, if the Commissioners all make annotations of these grants and put them, and it's not a two-way communication, would that be allowed or we can read it?
I was going to circle back on this question. So I think what you might have been proposing earlier was the Commissioners all to provide kind of a memorandum or a writing of what they want, and if that went out in the agenda packet, of course, it would be public and it would be, it would be a document that'd be available to the public, but if it went out to the agenda packet, you could all kind of review each other's homework and then have a better discussion, hopefully, at the time, because you'd seen some of those thoughts beforehand. Is that kind of what you were suggesting earlier?
I think that that would certainly help us get to a common ground, because at this point, I have no knowledge of where you two are sitting, and I don't have any problem making my thoughts public at all.
Yeah, I could share the information you send me, send to me if it's put in the packet so that the public sees it. It's just what I was referring to, is I can't send it to you guys individually, separate from it being a public document.
Well, once that's shared, we're all probably going to get some calls, because why isn't my doc, my money on your list? But we've got to figure out some way to, in an intelligent way, to share this information.
And just to be, you know, to be clear to your point, those would just be drafts, and you would not be obligated to keep those. Those would be just, this is where I'm at today, at the meeting, that's when the final decisions would have to be voted on, and you all have the right to persuade each other and change your minds, of course.
Randy, could you, would it be helpful for the Commission if we had a spreadsheet that we could just, you know, all of these items and then put an allocation amount, put administrative costs at the end?
Blank.
And has a calculator that just calculates total amounts?
Yeah, I can send you guys a spreadsheet that.
Pretty much got that here and just add a column to it.
I might, Commissioner Friesen, I might mention something for Commissioner Sellers is on this housing for one item, and it doesn't reflect only on housing, it reflects on any manufacturing facility, any building that adds an asset value to our tax base. And I've submitted a kind of a draft to both Randy and Pat regarding an NRP, which is a Neighborhood Revitalization Plan for the county, with the option of any is a neighborhood revitalization plan for the county with the option of any city having an opportunity to join an NRP if they didn't have one, either for a specific area of the city, it's up to them, but that would only apply to the county of alarm tax. And so that's a neighborhood revitalization plan that they are looking at now. And I would like to thank Rice County and some other counties around that have these NRPs in place for that. So that could affect some of the housing also. And I know you had talked about asking for something to be put together, so they're reviewing that now.
Great.
Well, but if we were, as a, as a group, willing to accept some type of program there, how does that have anything to do with our ARPA funds?
It, it doesn't accept allocation of funds because of the, because of the opportunity to get some tax abatements for a five-year period. So it cuts down on the amount of actual ad valorem taxes that a citizen would pay.
I think what Commissioners is saying is that if that was, if you had that context, maybe you would make different decisions here, like if there was, right?
Make some decisions on allocation or, or not.
Randy, it's, it seemed to me that the press perhaps took this hotel request a little out of context. Just to be clear, number one, I don't, absent that application, the county wasn't working on any sort of hotel project on its own.
Correct. That was all the developer, that's not the county.
I think, I'm guessing there's consensus here that we would prefer it to be a collaborative effort between the city and the chamber. Is, are they working with them or is this just a?
I believe.
And maybe you can't.
I believe they've, I, in talking with Deborah, and this was maybe a month ago, I think there was, I think this, Mr. Brooks did reach out to Deborah, but I don't know any more than that.
Sounds like there may be multiple.
Yeah, I think there is. Deborah on the radio this morning indicated that she's been talking to three different hotel development groups within the last few months. And so there's multiple discussions out there as it relates to a potential new hotel.
So from, from my point of view, I mean, it seemed a little premature. And I don't have all the context, so for me, it's a little premature to ask for this if it's not coordinated with the entire, you know, economic development group because that's, seems like one of their top priorities. And so for me to even think about that request, I would need information to, to know whether it's a coordinated effort between the city and chamber and other economic development agencies. I don't know what the other commissioners think.
Well, I don't think it's inappropriate for anybody to ask. I think it's, it's appropriate for us to use our best judgment of where, at the present time, we see the money going. And so I would concur with you that we don't know near enough about any hotel project to allocate funds at this point in time to that.
Right, I, I agree. I, I would absolutely support the effort. It's just, I would like to see it coordinated and I think it being in the packet, I think it was presented by the media as, as this project that was, you know, kind of being developed and we were the first to release it. I, this, it doesn't seem like that's the case here.
This is just another application, just like all the other ones on here that showed up.
Could you, could you request them to bring some information as to how they're coordinating with the economic development groups?
Already dealt with that, yeah.
Okay. Do we want to talk about housing at all? Do you want to take that back for?
Well, I, I might talk about housing just a little bit because I think that I might have been involved in a conversation, again, that the two of you haven't been, is that, you know, there was a, in the packet, a request from Jim Strawn and others for some new housing money and that, and I don't think I'm stating Deborah Tuftall from the chamber incorrectly. Deborah and I met with Jim Strawn and she thinks that this housing development that he's putting together is an important aspect of economic development. And I think she's willing that if we allow some money for economic development to the chamber to, to put together a down payment help that would help developers build reasonably priced housing. And that would have to be in a document that would be put together, but it would be an incentive to create more new housing in Reno County, which I think all of us want. And as I understood Deborah at that meeting, that she would put some of her economic development money towards this process. And so to me, on my priority of rankings and so forth, if she's willing to do that, I think that that would help new housing development and we wouldn't have to allocate anything to developers for new housing specifically. But again, that, that would have to be a document that the chamber puts together that is a memorandum of understanding of how that would work and that hasn't been done, but it sounds like it could, could happen and would, would help new housing be created. And, and again, you two weren't in that meeting and that's the problem with a three-person commission is that two of us can't ever go to a meeting and learn things about things. And so I, I bring that out that, and that sounded to Jim Strawn that it would be work and it wouldn't be just limited to his housing, but it would be to any person that's building a house in that criteria. And we're not talking about million-dollar houses, we're talking about what would be, and we're not talking about low-income housing, we're talking about moderate housing, which my understanding is in the 225 to 250 range at this point in time.
I don't know if you can build any house for that right now.
Well, they're, they're saying that they, they can, so.
I was amazed the other day when I was, I've got a vacant lot that I started looking. And so having a little bit of modular home experience, I called up just to get an idea of what it cost. A base house is 130 bucks a square foot. 1,300 square foot house is 180,000.
I, I heard.
That's on, and that, that's just the house. That's not the rest. So it's tough right now.
So on housing, my two items that are critical for me is, one, how do we multiply our investment with other stakeholders' investments? And two, how do we make the investment sustainable?
You know, his program with down payment that you were talking about is the same thing SCAD was going to do with their, with their rebuilds.
And then the, the third is, like I've said many times, you know, it would, it's going to be a lot easier for all three of us if there's, if there's collaboration across the spectrum. We saw that with healthcare, I'm sorry, with childcare and it worked extremely well and there was less competition when everybody was on the same page. And I think there's still some competing interests that are making this difficult for the commission and to the extent, you know, all of these parties can get together, it's going to make this process easier. Maybe that's not possible, but I mean, your point, Commissioner Hurst, that, you know, you know, there's, there's, you know, a down payment process that SCAD is working on or to your point, Commissioner Sellers, where the chamber may be tied in. You know, though, like seeing a cohesive group together, I think it's going to be a lot easier than picking winners and losers here.
I think it might behoove us individually to talk with, with the chamber, with Deborah to see, what do you think of that? Just to get an idea of kind of what they're talking about because, because five and a half million dollars on this, no, million, 2,000, 350,000, excuse me, is a lot of down payment, so.
Yeah, that's 20%, you multiply that by five.
I just.
It's 25 million dollars.
Or how many houses?
I don't think you can build, I don't think you can build a house in Reno County for under 300 right now.
I think you can, but it's going to be a slab house.
Well, the three of us are not in the house building business. If you talk to Jim Strawn, he feels like they can at this point with some of the state funding situations that they have access to, so.
Maybe subsidized, yeah. But yeah, I've got an open mind. And I don't know that it matters either, it's just less houses at the end of the day. So.
I won't bring out another group of dumb housing yet. One of the dumb housing, I think we're done with housing, yeah. I, I'm glad that Ace is here because I, I want to hear from the final report on childcare to make sure that if we just put a bundle of money in, that after that is gone, that there's some method of sustainability. You know, I, I texted her or emailed her a little deal the other day about looking at things and at one other item. And I just, I just want to, I, I haven't seen anywhere that it's sustainability without coming back to government and wanting some additional after the money is. So I, I, I just, I want to hear more about that and discuss maybe a little more about that. It's very important. It's all part of that economic development program, but to see how the public, private user all fits in together. And I think they're working on that, but it's not soon enough.
Well.
That's my point on childcare.
That was where I feel like some collaboration with, with the city of Hutch may, because I think they're, they put out an RFP for somebody to administer a report and, you know, ensure that whatever the city's particular priorities are, they're, they're met. So there's an oversight group. So, you know, to the extent we're going to want to do that and it's the same people, it makes some sense to just collaborate with the city and not duplicate that so that, so you have one request and then the city has another and it's the same group. Like that doesn't make sense to me.
I think though that, that maybe the fact that the total dollars amount needed for this in a very fine report, it was breaking down, broken down great. All the different areas in Hutchinson and the county. I thought that was well. And so if we're entitled to where we go, it's, it's good that we don't overlap anywhere. We don't need, absolutely need any duplication. But the total amount of dollars requested for the childcare and is, is large. We just want, I agree, we don't want to make sure we're duplicating anything and I don't think we will because there's so many different areas that were brought out with actual amounts on that request.
The, I, I don't think you can 100% guarantee that what the city started with is how that they'll be making their allocations. That discussion was done with a prior city manager that's not here any longer. So where they're headed is not known at this point.
We're responsible for the county's absorption of our.
And I just, you know, we worked on this for six, seven, eight months and I think we've got a plan here to get it decided and so people can start making improvements in the community.
Well, I like that idea of us, I like that idea of the spreadsheet and making it public. That's good for you.
Yeah, I just need to, oh, we can send you guys a spreadsheet and then.
Fill it in and send it back.
You fill it in, send it back with any narrative that will then be shared publicly among the three of you.
Well, I think I'll, I'll try to go with Randy and maybe meet the interim city manager and maybe the mayor and just talk through what, what we are, what are the things that we're, we may be duplicating and ways to work together. Like it's, I think it's worth the conversation and bring that back for the next meeting unless there's objections. Anything else?
Next meeting.
Yeah. Any other comments?
I imagine SCAD will be talking with the chamber here one of these days shortly if there's that, that's interest in hotels.
7B. Yeah, Commissioners, good morning. Item 7B is the agreements between the city of Hutchinson and the county regarding law enforcement and emergency communications. This was something that didn't get completed in 2021, so when I came on board in January, I started a process of meeting with the sheriff's office, learning about his department, meeting with Randy, and then finding out kind of what could be adjusted or what, what his needs were for these agreements. We sat through and kind of went line by line, made some technical corrections and a few not so technical corrections or changes, submitted those to the city with a red line explaining what we were kind of asking to change. City got back with us and approved it. City's attorney approved it. City council hasn't voted on it yet, so it's up for your guys' consideration and approval. If you want to approve it, then it will go to the city and be jointly approved. And hopefully, we're hoping this is something that will be revisited every year, but will make the kind of changes that will work for both entities for quite some time. I think the budgetary impact it mentions that the city's share of jail expenses decreased by 2% in recognition of some less services that the county was providing them for prison transport. Most of the changes were technical. Someone just clarified the Avenue G facility, as we call it, which does evidence storage and some other police storage and just kind of clarified that that is a county-owned building and ultimately the county is responsible for it, but create some processes for collaboration and how it's used going forward. And then one area that, in talking to people with, with the sheriff's department, that seemed to be a little bit of a, a subject of concern was just the way it was done in the past, either entity could in August terminate it and then the termination would be effective at the end of the year, which really is difficult for a county or city budget because then you have a very short adjustment period. So we proposed changing the adjustment, the termination period to basically be a longer termination timeframe, which would give both either entity a whole, the chance to adjust their budget and their operations for 16 months instead of four months, which would just kind of smooth out that process, hopefully, if it were to ever happen. In a contract, you always try and plan for all the scenarios and the end scenario, just to. in case it happens, even though that's not necessarily the goal, so I guess, I don't know what questions you might have about it. Process has been pretty smooth from my end, and I'm, you know, excited to see something in place, because I think the city and county have a nice history of collaboration that we want to continue.
Commissioner Sellers?
Well, I appreciate Patrick working so diligently on this and getting this to this point, I accept what he's put together, and I think, I will make a motion in a minute, but I think that these are extremely important, because the city and county need to work more together than we have in the past few years, past couple of years, and I think getting these documents signed will be an indication that we're wanting to work together, and we need to continue this relationship on a stronger basis than we've been able to do the past couple of years, so I would make the motion that we, as the county, approve the agreements and have the chairman sign them and ask the city to agree to them.
Second motion, I'm going to make, all indications, communications we've had during this process with the sheriff and Randy and everybody has been agreeable.
And, okay, can I say one more thing? We are decreasing, as I understand it, decreasing the money that the county receives from the city for the transportation of prisoners, but.
We're decreasing the transfer, it's not directly related, it's because of that that we're getting less money, but yes, sir.
Right, but to me, I think how this is moved is the appropriate way for it to be done, because I've been informed that what the pathway was, that the Sheriff's Office transported the prisoner to the courthouse, then the police department had to take over security during the court hearings, then he was released back to the sheriff, now the police department's taken him there, staying with him during the court process, it's the way it should have been done originally, so I'm in agreement with that.
Well, I too appreciate the work here. I, you know, I looked through this a few times, and the one worry I have is how, how we put the right language in place to where, when things aren't going well, because it seems like, you know, there was a lot of stalling and going on for quite a while on this, and all of a sudden some things changed administratively, and then now, now things are moving amicably amongst the two agencies again, and so I just, you know, you put these agreements in place for the, for the times that aren't going well, not for the times that are, and so, a couple of things, one, I, I think it's great that we're having the, there's a signatory line for the sheriff on these documents that relate to the sheriff's office, since he's an elected official, getting his, you know, buy-in on it's extremely important. You feel like we have strong enough dispute resolution in there, like that was my one thing, it didn't seem fully clear on, you know, here's, rather than just everybody kind of walking away and, you know, just saying it's done, like it would be, to me, I would be more comfortable, and I don't want to throw a wrench in it if the other commissioners don't think it's an issue, but like this escalating dispute process to where you're not just, like I think it was, there was kind of poor form on both sides, both the county and the city, by just shooting these legal letters back and forth and not, you know, having people come together, have a discussion, and like putting that in writing, like, you know, step one would be the administrator and the manager meet, step two would be, you know, the chair and the mayor meet, and then you finally have a group meeting before you just walk, given the importance of this.
I guess my thoughts on, what we, one thing we have tried to do in here is clarify, it was a little bit looser in some of it, where the buck might, where the final decisions might lie on different things, for example, the Avenue G at the end of the day is a county-owned building, and so there's language about the city chief and the city giving informed consent and giving kind of, you know, collaboration about it, but at the end of the day, it's, it is our building that we have to deal with, and there's other parts of the agreement that talk about city administrators talking to county administrators and sheriffs and chiefs talking. My experience just, I guess legally, is when parties both are desiring to operate in good faith and communicate, they're able to do it pretty freely, but when, when one party just isn't, if things go badly in this agreement or anything, it's hard to make someone, you know, talk it out if they're not interested in doing that, so I have done definitely, there's definitely clauses in language we can put in there that require more meetings as part of a stepped-up process, but it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily mean that we'll get that participation, but to me.
Don't you, aren't you kind of compelled to, if you agree to it in writing, before you, you know, just walk away from the agreement?
Yeah, I mean, you can require someone to come to a meeting, you just can't require someone to engage in it, is my, my experience, because I've done plenty, I've not done plenty, but I've been involved in binding mediations where both parties are required by our court to mediate, but no one has a very invested, any energy in doing it. I think that the termination by extending that gives both parties a better incentive to find solutions, because with the old termination being four months, there was a little bit of an apprehension that all of a sudden they'd wake up one day and get a sudden termination, and I'm hoping that by stretching that out, for one thing, that would give you a period where you could maybe, maybe reengage, and if nothing else, it would be, okay, well, we have this long termination period that we know is coming, but we have plenty of time to adjust our budgets and our operations, so it won't be such an impactful event if it happened, but I mean, we could certainly, I guess, we can certainly add clauses that require more mediation, more communication, I guess, I just hadn't considered that in the process.
And I wouldn't have either, had I not been through the last year and a half.
But Daniel, I think that we can take care of those in a different way, is we met with the city a couple of months ago and had kind of a confrontational meeting, I think the point was made that we want to communicate and have these discussions on an ongoing routine basis, and so I think that it's paramount for the county and the city to meet not less than every six months on the issues that have to do with both of us working together, and it's paramount that the county administrator and the city manager brings up those things that are going to be discussed in the future, so that the two legislative parts are not blindsided by immediate changes. The only way to do this is to make sure that we have a good working relationship with the city commission, and I think we had a good start of that two months ago, and if we continue those meetings at least not less than biannually, this will take care of itself.
I think the meetings together are mandatory, if you want to use that word, I don't like mandatory anymore, but, but I think those are a must, if I might put it that way, and with, also with any other city council that wants to meet.
Certainly.
And then, part of that, it comes about by this mayor's form, will help that, too.
And also, when you go to five Commissioners, that might be a way to spread out some of that communication, because you'll have more Commissioners able to engage the people.
So it sounds like there's, there's comfortability with current language, I definitely heard that from Commissioner Sellers. Okay, the only other point I would have is regarding the jail, there's a commitment that the community made via, I think it was a referendum for, was it sales tax? Sorry, for a period of time, and to me, that would be the period, the term of the agreement, and I think the point was made when there were some threats of pulling out, that like, hey, the community made this commitment together, city, county, and to me, that would make some sense to kind of pin that term to the bond term, that way we're not, like, it seems like an empty threat and an unneeded one, to just say, hey, we're going to walk away because the city residents are, you know, committed to that.
The bond term's already over.
Yes.
Yeah, so to me, though, Daniel, I think your point's well made, but this is, this was a vote by the citizens for a long-term commitment, and so at this next meeting that's had, that should be a discussion item, but the intention is that this is a long-term commitment to share that jail between the city and the county, because the same people are paying for it.
I mean, would that, would it make more sense to do a five or a 10-year term?
I like the year and a half, I think that's, to me, that's efficient, I see your point going five years, but, but I like the idea that, and I think if we continue to have those, those meetings with the city and with the, with their city council and their, and their city manager, that those things can be talked about and brought up and, like we hadn't been before.
It just doesn't make any sense to me with that kind of investment that you, you even consider looking at it every year and a half, in my opinion, but.
But it's automatic renewal, that's the.
A suggestion, I guess, I could make on that, because I just took the, kind of, I started with the framework for what was there, if you were to agree, if you were to get into the agreement on a one year, just like in a commercial setting, you can, you can have a short-term agreement and then begin negotiating a longer-term agreement while you're, while you're in one, so that might be a suggestion I would make, is if you got into, if the city and the county both adopted this agreement, you could immediately begin discussions about whether or not they'd be interested in extending it.
Well, I mean, that, I think that's a fair compromise, and to me, it makes sense, like there's a lot of inefficiencies that can be created when one party decides to pull out or even threatens to pull out, like it causes disruption in, in operations, and we've seen that, and I'm glad that we came to compromise, but there were things that, both good and bad, I think, that came out of that, but I think you want to limit disruption, but I think it's fair to just ask for that in the future. Randy, do you have a set kind of cadence with the county, the city manager on how often you meet?
No, there's not a set.
I mean, to me, I don't know what the other Commissioners think, I think the biannual joint meeting makes sense, I think you guys should at least be doing lunch, lunch quarterly, that'd be my suggestion, and then let us know how it's going, but I don't want to tell you what to do on that, but I would, I think there should be a cadence, whatever you decide, and then you should report back to us, so we, I think we lost a little, we just, and it's, it's our fault, too, but we lost some relationship there, and we're gaining that back now, but a more regular effort would be appreciated. Maybe I can.
Maybe you schedule the next meeting for when they hire a new city manager.
Well, I think it's just as important, if not more, when they have an interim, that you guys talk, but.
Just for your, I mean, Gary and I have emails and phone calls, not scheduled, but with that in issue, I've had a lot of contact with him over the past.
I would just appreciate, kind of like we get.
I would move for a question. Have a vote on this here.
Okay, there's Commissioners, well, you, you kind of interrupted, so.
Okay, I will, I will let you finish your conversation then.
I read the rules on that.
You paused too long, maybe that's what.
Yeah, we can talk about it later. So there's a motion, a second on the table, hearing, no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Sellers, excuse me, Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hers.
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
This is a quick, kind of real high-level budget update, Chairman Friesen and I talked last week, he wanted me to kind of come give a real high-level overview of where we're at. At the end of last week, we received the estimated valuation from the county clerk's office, the Reno County, that's $675 million and some change, it's about 5.3% increase over last year. As a, kind of a heads up, that inflation is higher than that increase, but, so we, in some of the budget requests, I am seeing some large increases for materials, fuel and asphalt materials are relatively high, so those are going to really impact the recommended budget when that comes before you layer this month. I want to give you a breakdown of the schedule, depending on the revenue neutral rate, the revenue neutral rate for Reno County for 2023's budget would be 37.468 mils, right now, we're at 39.498, so it'd be a reduction in two mils, and that's really to keep, keep us at the same taxes assessed as the current here, so, just kind of as a reminder, the revenue neutral rate means that taxes never go up, regardless of valuation. If we do not, if the county decides not to, or to state that we may be above the revenue neutral rate, which is a safe, would be the safe assumption, even if you go below the revenue neutral rate, if you state beforehand, the deadline is July 20th, that's the day we need to let the county clerk's office know whether or not the county's going to be above the revenue neutral rate or below it. And I believe the next two commission meetings, if you guys don't, do not schedule a special meeting, there's only two more commission meetings, that's June 28th and July 12th, so July 12th would be the last day of regular scheduled meeting to set kind of the maximum budget, to say where you guys are going to be at on the mill levy and the revenue neutral rate. Between August 20th and September 20th is when the revenue neutral rate hearing would need to be held with publication in the newspaper at least 10 days prior, same for the normal official public or budget hearing, those can be on the same day, and with just separate notifications in the newspaper, and then between August 20th and October 1st, that's when passed resolution, if you go above the revenue neutral rate and to formally adopt the 23 budget, and then August 30th through October 1st is certify the budget and send to the county clerk. Just kind of want to give you that very quick level of the schedule, the, I have all the county department requests in, running them through different spreadsheets, and what we're still working on, we don't have the official numbers from the city of Hutchinson for Fire District Two and dispatch, I know the city, I think, had published their preliminary budgets, I can kind of look from those numbers to get an idea of what the city council may be looking at, but I haven't had the opportunity to meet with Gary or Angela at the city to, to see if those are the official numbers that are sending to the county for a request. And then the revenues and grant monies, just working with Leslie on final. And then the revenues and grant monies, just working with Leslie on final numbers to make sure we've accounted for all the grants that are, have been received this year and encumbrances from previous year in the audits, just working all those numbers on the accounting side to see where we're at for a mill levy, a proposed mill levy, just based on a request. So that's what staff is still working on, and we will be ready for a presentation on June 28th for the recommended budget. That won't be the budget to pass. That'll be the recommended budget and some areas where you guys may need to make cuts or get more direction from the county commission of what cuts you're wanting to make, whether it's capital or service providing departments or outside agencies.
Dispatch shared 50/50 with whatever the city council approves for dispatch?
For the most part, yes. We get some credits based on a couple of different expenditures because they're already paying, because the other, there's an agreement that talks about like for electricity, different utility bills that are split in a different manner that are pulled from that agreement.
But in general.
Technology, in general, it's 50/50, and that's tied to the agreement that you guys just passed. The one change in the agreement that was passed is, I believe it's by May 1st, the advisory council for the 911 advisory council meets as a group and makes a, has seen the budget that the city's going to present and kind of has, gives their input by May 1st. And then by June 1st, the city manager and county administrator meet to discuss what both sides are comfortable with presenting to the governing bodies. Once the county commission or whichever goes first, if the county commission adopts a budget and the city then increases dispatch, the agreement states that the county is only liable for the amount that was previously agreed to. Even if the city has not formally approved their budget yet, if they make changes, increase it after you guys have approved, then they're on the hook for that additional amount.
That's the same way with the fire, isn't it?
For the most part, yes.
I think there's a huge increase in fire coming, what do you like?
Fire, yeah, they may have an increase. They also, that's also based on valuation and the percent that's in the District Twos, their valuation compared to the city of Hutchinson as a whole's valuation. So that, the amount that the residents of District Two have paid has kind of crept up over the years. I think last year was 21%, 22% of the entire Hutchinson Fire Department budget is paid for by District Two residents.
How is that allocated by households or?
It's their valuation. So I don't know what the city's valuation, if theirs is 400 million and District Twos is 80 million, it just, it's that percentage.
Well, I think one of the things Randy needs from us is, is a little bit of early guidance on where we would like him to shoot for, you know, whether it's revenue neutral or budget neutral or more latitude.
What is budget neutral?
Well.
Like the flat mill levy.
Yeah.
Our numbers would go up, but it's the flat mill levy.
You, you mentioned in your report that inflation is creeping into requests. Like what, where are you seeing that?
Fuel.
Fuel.
Sheriff's Office, Public Works, Health Department of San Antonio, asphalt materials. There's, that's, as a reminder, the county, we buy products like everyone else does. So when the cost goes up, we pay more also.
Is it, is it unreasonable to say, maybe we need to reduce certain, like, maybe we need to pave less roads next year and defer that due to the extreme cost of oil?
That is, you guys can make that decision. That's up to you. I will warn you that once you start that, every year, there's less miles. And to get it on the schedule to be replaced or worked on, just the sheer number of miles we have, you're always going to be behind, and the quality of the roads will go down. That does impact people's vehicles and travel, but that is your option.
You can't make it up in future years.
We're also gaining 11 miles with the new highway project between here and Rice County that, that's not budgeted for right now. So we're already adding miles that have to be put into the plan somewhere.
Commissioner. We have just a little under 600 miles. I know 585 or 590, something like, and again, but just a little under 600 miles. If we do 30 miles a year, it takes 20 years to get over and start. The end-of-life road is not 20 years. And on a, maybe you've heard me say this before, but I sat in, not long after I was on the commission, I sat in on a really good seminar on turning blacktop roads back to gravel. And to do a, to do it right with the proper pace with the traffic that we have on this, it takes roughly the same amount of dollars to ask, to put a layer of asphalt over it as it does to turn that road back to gravel. And there's, or non-paid. And when you do that, then there's more additional cost every year to that. Just, just as a highlight, just as what I've learned, okay?
But if you don't have the money, like, the, I mean, I mean, I don't know that the only answer is, well, we're going to have to spend it anyways. I mean, I think at this level, like at oil prices at the way they are, I think there could be a discussion about deferring certain costs.
Well, I, I see your point about high oil prices, and I would be one of those people that would think at some point in time they're going to come down. But the only way I would be willing to think about your idea would be a pretty general commitment by the commission that we would make it up the next year or something because I'm with Commissioner Hirst that the more you ignore these things, you compound the problem quickly. And, but I, I do agree with you, Daniel, that, that oil and asphalt prices have the potential to come down, just as fertilizer prices have just in the recent, you know, Ron helped me, hasn't fertilizer come down about 30% here?
I can't tell you the percentage.
It's, you know, these things have been.
It's seasonal, seasonal, too.
I assume this year, we're paving less just because prices are higher and the budget is what it is?
We're trying to get as many as we can with the, the plan, with Don's plan of the miles, we're trying to get as many as we can. But yes, I mean, we only have a limited amount of money in the budget. There are some reserve funds specifically for roads that he has a little bit of access to, but those don't last. If we use it this year, we won't have it for next year.
Well, I, I guess it doesn't make sense to me to use reserve funds when prices are high.
Special highway, it's the special highway fund that you use for capital or if we need to get roads done, if there are some that may be in really bad condition, to make sure that those get covered.
Be very similar to when the state comes in and inspects 10 bridges every year. We have bridges that we plan on doing, and then we, maybe one of those bridges takes more money and we pull a little out of reserve. Is that right?
Yeah, the reserve builds back up over time.
Yeah. I mean, what, is, is there anything wrong, wrong with like using reserve funds when prices are low, like to, you know, get better?
We've tried to, over the years, just to try to stay consistent with the miles and the budgets as much as possible. This is a different year because of the prices, and we don't know next year it's going to keep, where it's going to be at.
Well, it's a tough situation, I think, for us. Like, I generally like the idea of a, of revenue neutral. Am I saying that right?
Yes.
That's the one where the mill comes down?
It's, yeah, well, the taxes never go up. The dollar amount of taxes never goes up.
Yeah, I like that because it gives, it challenges us to find ways to cut things. It's not comfortable for you, for any of the staff, but without a challenge like that, I don't think we're ever looking at efficiencies the way, I, I know, I know we do, right? Like, I'll give you credit for that, but there's, like, in, in private business, you know, the, the economic risk is, you know, you lose your job, you lose your business. That's a pretty strong incentive. And we don't have a lot of that in government, and so this particular incentive I like just because it puts a little impetus on it and challenges the government to find ways to reduce costs. That's where I would be.
So, but what you're suggesting here on a, a year that inflation is running at 8%, I think the gist of your suggestion is that you're going to cut 8% of the county's functions by a revenue neutral budget. And I, I, I would rather Randy show us a budget, you know, last year, we went even below revenue neutral. We, we were, I believe we were five mils lower. I don't know how many hundred thousand dollars below revenue neutral we were, but we were able to use some cash carryover to go below the budget the year before. I don't see us being able to do that this year with what's going on with inflation. My, my desire, what I'd like Randy to give us is to give us his proposed budget and then go ahead and, and state what it would take to get to what you're asking for, Daniel, on a revenue neutral budget and what items would have to be removed to get to that point. And then, and my feelings at this point in time is I would vote for something in between.
Well, that's fair. I mean, I think, you know, if we, if we set some goalposts here and one side's revenue neutral and take a look at it, that makes sense. I, I think we ought to tighten the belt now because I think the next year and the year after are going to be, like, this isn't nothing, I don't think. Like, what we're seeing now, we're just perceiving problems with inflation. I think to really trickle down to our revenue, our revenue's going up. Like, when, when inflation eventually trickles down to our revenue in the next years, I think we're going to be in a bad spot if we don't prepare now.
That was one of the problems I had with cutting mill levy last year. Remember that? You can talk about five, and I can talk about this, okay? Is that we had inflation at that time that was, was rearing in a very ugly head already. And so at one point in time, what I learned a long time ago on the city council was if you cut one year and something comes up, then you've got to raise it. And we're kind of caught in that because everything, paper, everything is going up in cost. That's where I think that we're, ARPA funds are eventually going to help with this because we're, we, we've made this kind of a priority to look at on a return on investment, haven't we? By going into economic development, by going into all of those things that come with economic development, with childcare and housing and so forth. And basically about three things you could do.
Yeah, I mean.
Raise taxes or, or cut services or increase your tax base.
I mean, you can, I think you can look at it two ways. You can look at it, do we need to prepare ourselves and boost our revenue now? Or we need to prepare ourselves and cut our expenses now? So, I think we're saying the same thing.
Cut services.
In different ways, but. Does, it sounds like we have consensus for you, Randy, that there's, there's not consensus here yet, but there's certainly, we, we want to see probably the far end, which is revenue neutral, and then somewhere in between. Is that, did I hear that right?
Yeah, Randy will prepare a budget for us based upon what he has, and we'll review it.
But we want to see a revenue neutral budget as kind of the, the far end case.
I don't think it's possible.
It would never be cutting.
If you don't try.
It'd be cutting services, the, I guess, the direction I would want from you guys. And I can put numbers to make it and then show you to decide, here's what truly you would, here are the cuts. You guys decide what departments they are because it probably would be either capital, operational costs like asphalt to cut services or cut people.
Okay.
Mr. Sellers?
Well, I guess now's the time for me to, as you know, I felt like by using cash carryover last year, we could cut our budget even below revenue neutral for last year, and we did. The budget for this year was less than what it was the year before because of using cash carryover. We reduced the mill levy five mils by doing that, and we have four commission candidates in the room today. Everybody complains about taxes, and I agree, taxes are too high. But when we did this last year, I did not have one taxpayer call me and say, thank you for lowering my taxes. And I think the gist of what I learned from that was no matter what taxes are, they're going to be too high. So I, I agree with Commissioner Hirst. It's going to be very difficult to get to revenue neutral this year.
Randy, do you have a clear direction?
Sure. So my, well, recap is to bring you alternatives. I will have to recommend a budget of what I would recommend.
Yeah.
And then one that's at revenue neutral rate with kind of your options. Here's the amount and cuts it would take. You can, and list out it's cutting capital, cutting cash balance, basically your options to, if that's the route you want to go. So that's what you'll see on June 28th.
Okay.
So.
ClearGov?
Yeah. This, ClearGov, this, the point of this is part of the budgeting process and part of the reason for some of the delays, other than not getting all the information, is taking, the way it works now is we, the financial system, we send out, here's your budget, here are your documents to all directors, enter your numbers in each line item. And then those get sent back to me. I look at them, then I meet with directors and then make cuts. And here's my recommended budget. And it's all in the financial system that we download, create Excel spreadsheets, and it's kind of, we don't really do different scenarios. It's what they put in at this point in time and then what changes I make, and then it's in the financial system. But to really, I guess, work around with the numbers, to look at options, I have to then download it into an Excel spreadsheet and make sure all the equations work. then download it into an Excel spreadsheet and make sure all the equations work, that they're correct, and work with that. So, had a small group look at ClearGov. It's a software for budgeting that, and I looked, the City of Shawnee, that's one that uses it. I've looked at their digital budget book. I talked to their chief financial officer, who said it was a good product, not overly expensive compared to a lot of software programs. It's real simple, they have a Tyler Technologies financial platform also, allows for, on a website or a web-based service, all directors to log in, enter their budgets, look at different scenarios, and as they're entering, can message back and forth to me on that software. I can look at what they're putting in and make changes, and we can run different scenarios. And it's all on the, the software, but then, and that, there's operational budgeting, personnel budgeting, capital, and it's the digital budgeting books, the other part that I wanted to bring your attention to. So, I've run up the City of Shawnee, just kind of show they are a similar-sized community as us. But what I like is to be able to show this to the public and the commission, so everyone gets a better understanding of where our money is, where we receive our money, and what it's spent on. So, the software allows systems to be able to, we put this out there on our website, it'll show here are the taxes, you know, really get into where their money comes from, breaks it, sorry, I'm scrolling pretty quick, but then breaks it down, expenditures, we can look at departments, by department, public safety, here's much per capita, here's their budget. It really makes it easy to read for, and understand where their money's going. So, that's kind of what I wanted to present to you, is to recommend a software that allows for, I think, quicker budgeting process. You guys would have access to go in and look at what the requests are at any time. And then actually, after a certain stage, we could set it up to where you could start making comments. If you wanted to get into the weeds on any specific department or issue, you could do that, and it would kind of lock that down to where we see what your, where your goals are, priorities. It's kind of a better way to illustrate our budget. And it goes with the programs, the overview. Let's see if I can find. Actually, on the City of Shawnee's website, it'll also list all the programs by department. I go to, let me, just, just kind of show you the, the budget book that. Because they also do priority-based budgeting. We've talked about setting priorities. They have theirs in place now. Kind of giving you a look of, if we, when we get here to the priorities, the governing body sets the priorities. Here's what everything's looked at and rated for the budget, and then. I was kind of just showing you this kind of, all, a lot of this goes through the ClearGov, as you see. This is kind of where I see Reno County a lot more transparent for the community. I'm not finding the page that I was looking, I had the other day. So, but that's kind of.
So during.
Quick overview of ClearGov and Shawnee's.
So during the budgeting process in the future, interested citizens would see the proposed budget, and then once it's adopted, they would see the adopted budget at any point in time they wanted to look at a certain area?
Well, we would, they wouldn't have access to log in to see it in the middle of the process, the commission would, the governing body would, to be able to see things. Once it's then published, we would post it out on our website, and then they could get, look through any department program of how the, what the cost is, and then how much is property tax versus grants versus sales tax. It's really, the intent is to be much more transparent with where their money is.
But it would also help you significantly on preparing the process.
It would help, yes. The committee that I had put, included financial advisor, Shonda in my office, human resources and IT, we all thought it would be a great product to have, that would help us out in the budget process and then be more transparent for the community.
Comments? Mr. Sellers?
Well, a couple thoughts here. One, the county administrator's recommending this. I think the commission's biggest job is to hire a competent county administrator and take his advice on most of the things that we do. The second thing is, if it would help the budgeting process, I think it's appropriate. I've been on three elected commissions in my life, and the budgeting process is the hardest thing for me to understand. I've spent a lot of time trying to understand it, and at least county is easier than school boards, so that is in our favor. But I think that if, I know how much time it takes the county administrator to prepare the budget. If it would help with the preparation and be clear to the public of actually what we're doing, you know, I think it'd be interesting to the public to see these percentages because what we, we take in, what, 40 million of taxes, but we spend 70-some million around here, so there's a lot of money spent that isn't tax money that I don't think the public understands. So, I, I guess I'm for this because I think it would help prepare a better budget, and I think it would help the public to see, be more transparent to the community, and I think people are wanting to seek transparency, be able to go in if they have a question on road and bridge fund, what's been spent. And now that we, we can't, and I think it, it would be good for the county.
Commissioner Hurst?
I move to approve the proposal to purchase ClearGov for budgeting management software at a cost of $9275 for 2022, and then $26,400 annually, beginning January 1st, '23.
I'd second that. You know, I, I think it's a great proposal, and I agree with, with Commissioner Sellers' comments. The, the budgeting process is complicated. The state forms associated with the budgeting process are extremely complicated, and very few people know how to read those, which is unfortunate since it's one of the things the public is most interested in. But it's, you know, I think everybody understands when their taxes go up, but very few understand why. And so, this is, I think, a great, great effort. I think Randy's listening to our request to be more transparent with what we're doing from a budgeting perspective, and I would support it as well, so. Any final discussion?
No. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes?
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
And Commissioner, just to let you know, it can be absorbed. Commissioner Friesen had, had talked with him last week. He wanted possible savings, or is it going to increase anything? And it could be absorbed into other technology line items that Mike oversees, where there can be adjustments in the capital budget to, to put this in perform, or the HR software that was approved previously, at a previous meeting, to make sure it fits into that, those budgeted categories, and just adjust other line items to make it work without increasing the overall budget.
You're up again.
I know. Last meeting, you guys, I don't think I had, there was an appointment of a board, a committee member that comes before the commission that had gone through the 90-day advertisement process, open on our county website for people to apply for that position. And then when it came to the, came here as a, I think it was consent item, as a recommendation from the department, after following that process, and it only had the number of applications that needed for the board member seat. So, there were not any applicants that did not get a seat that, you know, that applied. So, it was questioned whether that was the actual process that you guys approved or consented to at a previous meeting. So, I've included here, just so you see, the administrative process that you guys had agreed to follow. What's not in here is, that I think was mentioned last, at the last meeting, was after that 90 days, or when the number of applicants are presented to the county commission, they have not also gone through the, been sent to the county commission for, or the board, board chair to kind of review, to see if there's, I guess, concerns or more people that we wanted to reach out to, to diversify the, the boards. Is that, Commissioner Sellers, I think you were the one that mentioned, I think, was that interpretation correct of what you were looking for?
Pretty much. I think the board chairman should get to see the applicants and decide whether that's appropriate or we need additional applicants before it's put on the agenda. So, I think our, if this up here was our statement before, I think we should add to it. And part of that process that I think the board chairman should see those applicants is because I think at times there's tendencies with individual departments that have board members to maybe be too limiting on who might be a good board member for that department.
Mr. Hurst, do you agree?
Yep. Sounds like we have consensus if you want to make that adjustment.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just add to it, that once, basically after all the applications come in, the board, whoever's board chair will see that list and we can have a discussion before bringing to the full commission.
Thank you for you two agreeing with me on something, I appreciate it.
I think you feel good today, okay?
Financial report. This is just year-to-date expenditures by fund, kind of, just to kind of give you guys a quick overview. I didn't see anything in here that really caught my attention that was of concern. Wanted to see if anyone had any questions on, on the numbers.
Okay, most of the departments are significantly under 50% for five months, but the general fund is at 47%. Is there a reason it's higher?
The, that's on the revenue. Let me pull the expenditure total.
Well, maybe I misread it. Was I reading revenue?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's revenue. The expenditures is 27%.
Okay, remove my question, I'm sorry.
Good thing we didn't agree with you on that.
I just said budgets are the hardest thing that the commissions have to deal with.
They are, aren't they?
Next item I have is monthly department reports, and for this meeting, this included aging, appraiser, automotive, county clerk, community corrections, communications division, district attorney, and emergency management. Again, these provided each meeting, just so you get half of the departments each month, or each meeting to review, any concerns or thoughts they have.
Commissioner Sellers? Did you have any thoughts on staff reports?
No.
Okay. The next thing is, we do, last week was the deadline for companies to send in a request for qualifications for the shooting range. Or if no decision has been made to move completely forward with doing a shooting range or how much to spend, but we do have four companies, GLMV, Hutton, Trainer, and PLI, that sent in documents. So, the plan was to put a small group together and invite each company to interview, whether they want to do it in person or via Zoom, to try to find the company that, that a group felt was the best fit for Reno County, and then bring that back to the full county commission for possible approval. I would like for at least one, or, not one, at least one commissioner to be on that committee.
Would you like to?
No, I don't have any desire because I'll probably, I'll probably vote against that when it comes up.
Well, I feel like that would, that's why I thought you should be there, just to give some alternative opinions that they should hear.
Well, this isn't a conference to decide whether to do it or not, it's a conference to decide who would give us the input to build the thing. And I'm just not, I haven't heard from the sheriff how, how he's going to finance the, the dollars, and I told him that I wouldn't vote for it unless he showed that he can decrease it someplace else, and I haven't seen that, so I don't want to be on the group.
Commissioner Hurst?
Where, where are you at? You on the fence?
I think you, I think you ought to be, someone from the commission ought to be involved in that, okay?
Would you like to be that person? Do I, do I have the power to appoint?
What's the timeline frame regarding this, Randy?
Probably, it'll probably be meet a couple times over the next month, the interview, an hour interview for, so four, so maybe 10 hours over the next month.
Okay. You're going to get you off the hook, but remember, sometime, maybe you won't be chairman.
Yeah, it comes back. Come, come, what goes around comes around, right? It has a potential, doesn't it? But in Commissioner Hurst's defense, like, I think 10 hours is a lot for that one issue. Like, you, you ought to, like, summarize it and.
And that, I just, that was maybe worst-case scenario, based on there are four, four companies, if we take an hour for each one, discussion and interview, and then a couple other meetings if we don't all agree on something.
Maybe you could thin it out a little and.
Yeah.
Make it a two-hour thing instead of 10. If I was, if I was appointed, that's what I'd tell Randy. I think that's your power, given your point.
I was looking at your aspect and being sure that we try to be as cost efficient as possible, so we would hate to leave one company out.
Okay, well, your prerogative.
At least we have more than one, which is sometimes we don't have.
Commissioner Hurst, would you like to start on?
Yeah, I would. Comments? I would make a comment yesterday afternoon. Somebody threw cigarette, something flammable out a mile and a half north of Whiteside Elevator and about an eighth or quarter mile east that ended up burning, I'm going to guess, 200 acres of wheat. And I did see highway patrol out there investigating because it didn't start at the edge of the field, it started right out in the field.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm going to guess eight feet out, something like that from in the field. So I want to caution everybody, keep your smokes inside and don't be throwing out something that will cause a spark because with anywhere, not just a wheat field, but we've got another case at 25, 30 mile an hour wind today and you don't stop those real easy. I know a friend of mine, a couple friends of mine, lost a lot of wheat yesterday. And the other thing I would like to comment on is I appreciate our county administrator by the involvement that he has taken with the department heads, employees with regard to leadership training and communication. I really think that's outstanding, so thank you for doing that. That's all.
Mr. Sellers?
I'm glad that the fire didn't start at the landfill. When I first heard it, I was worried that that might have been ours.
I was over at the farm, which is east of there, and I was afraid that that.
Was the situation.
Was the case.
And Commissioner Hurst, I appreciate your comment about Randy being involved in this leadership training. I think that's excellent that we're doing all that and I appreciate you bringing that up. Last Friday, I went to the annual meeting of Highlands, one of our cities that had invitation of Carol Moore and I want to thank her for inviting me to that. It was, and they had our own Adam with emergency preparedness and our fire administrator Travis boat there talking about fire precautions. And I think the, the community was listening and several of them took forms to look at their own properties and so forth. It was a nice meeting and I was glad to be there. Yesterday afternoon at 3, as a bystander, I attended the city budget meeting on, when they were considering the groups that we fund, just like that have come to us. And I thought it was interesting for me to sit there on a, just a citizenship basis to hear the discussion about the various groups and their funding and so forth. So I thought that was interesting and I've asked our county administrator to, and I think he's got somebody working on that, to give the, our candidates some information about the county in general and so forth. Will that be to the candidates fairly soon?
I'm working with Lori to get all the information.
Tell Lori to agree. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Sellers, I think they said it well. I don't have any other comments. Any other? You got anything?
I move adjourned.
Motion adjourned. All second. All in favor, say aye.